Not yet.
Okay, I'll call this board of selectmen meeting to order at 7:01 for Thursday, October 3rd, 2019. Before we say the pledge of allegiance to the flag tonight, I'd like to ask you to stand and take a moment of silence for all the people who lost their lives in the plane crash at Bradley Field. And I'd like to single out Gary Mazone, a lifelong resident of East Windsor who lost his life in that crash. So we our prayers and our thoughts and go out to his family. We could stand and take a moment of silence. Thank you. Well, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'll move that the agenda be approved as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the regular minutes of September 19th, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
I do have some communication tonight. The first one is from the First Congregational Church in Skanton. They write, "Dear Mr. Maynard, at the First Congregational Church of East Windsor's Executive Council held on September 9th, 2019, it was unanimously approved to grant permission to the town of East Windsor to reinstate the historical sign on the church green after it had been refurbished through a project with the East Windsor Historical Society. In addition, permission is also granted to plant an oak tree donated by the state of Connecticut at the same church green. And we thank them for giving us permission to do that. It's really the center of that part of the town, the center of the historical society." And then my other correspondence is from the East Windsor Fire District Expansion Committee, and it's a final report. I think at a subsequent meeting, we'll have to have this as an agenda item and give it some more thought and discussion. But this is their final report, and this is what it says. "Board of Selectmen, this committee has completed its charge to study the possibility of expanding the current Warehouse Point Fire District to include the entire town of East Windsor and change the name of the East Windsor -- to the East Windsor Fire District. The main reason for this is to rectify the taxation of fire services on the citizens residing in Warehouse Point Fire District. As you are aware, residents of the Fire District pay 100 percent of the Warehouse Point Fire Protection Services and 50 percent of the Broadbrook Fire Protection Services. Residents not living in Warehouse Point Fire District pay only 50 percent of the Fire Protection Services for Broadbrook and 0 percent of the Fire District Protection Services for Warehouse Point. The Fire Protection Services for the entire town are delivered by the Warehouse Point Fire District and the Broadbrook Fire Department. Several meetings were held and a new charter for expanded district was created. This charter was created with members of the Broadbrook Fire Department Incorporated, Board of Directors, the Warehouse Point Fire Department Incorporated, and the Warehouse Point District Commission. The proposed charter was presented to the Warehouse Point Fire Department Incorporated members. Current bylaws of the Warehouse Point Fire District do not require a vote of the department to proceed in the expansion of the current fire district. The only vote required is a vote of the Warehouse Point Fire District Commission to proceed with the expansion of the district. This vote by the district would not happen until both the Broadbrook Fire Department and the Warehouse Point Fire Department agreed on the proposed charter and district expansion. According to the Broadbrook Fire Department bylaws, any charge -- any change to the bylaws must be approved at two consecutive membership meetings and must pass the change by a two-thirds vote. The first Broadbrook Fire Department membership meeting passed the proposed charter for the expanded fire district. However, it did not pass the second membership meeting. Without further support -- without full support from both fire departments to move forward with the district expansion, we believe we will not receive the support of the townspeople to proceed. The Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance will have to explore different options to correctly enact -- in equality of taxation for the fire protection services of the town of East Windsor. So, I was disappointed with that, that they didn't approve the new charter. It'll be interesting to read the new charter. And like I say, we'll have to bring that up at another board of selectmen meeting. And Jim, you're here, do you want to add anything or say anything? How about members of the board? Charlie?
Yeah, I think we'll have to digest this, we'll have to look at, I'd like to look at, you know, what their charter was and see from that, that I would hope that we could schedule a workshop with both departments to kind of go through and see what other options there are.
Steve?
Within the next 30 days.
Sounds good. Steve, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I do.
Have a seat, Bob.
You know, we want these two fire departments to come together as well. Okay? And the way you just read this, it's, you know, be it the Warehouse Point Fire District's way or no way. Okay, that's how I'm reading this. So, I don't want a fire district. I want them to become one fire department, like they're trying to do. And if it means raising the taxes 1 percent or whatever, to get them to come together so we can support the whole fire operation in this town, then so be it. But when you start having fired districts, there is no control of the spending. You have no control. They can do what they want, it's the way it is. I want it to be the East Windsor Fire Department, no fired districts. If we have to go up a little on the tax, I don't think anybody will mind because it's protecting everybody in the town of East Windsor, make sure that their houses don't burn to the ground. That's my comment.
Jason raised his hand, so, go ahead.
I read it differently than Steve did. I didn't think that this was an ultimatum that was put in front of us. I thought that the folks who were trying to resolve the issue looked into a possible solution and realized that it's not the solution that they'd hoped it would be. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. There is something to be learned from crossing off an option off of the list, and that means that there are just other options that we need to look at. But I didn't take this to be an affront in any way. I thought that they were, I thought they were really submitting reports saying what they thought was a possible solution.
Andy? Well, let Andy say it.
I think that the people on both sides, the Warehouse Point and Broadbrook Fire Department, spent a lot of time, worked hard to get where we are. If the answer is that this is not the right solution, we've found something else. Steve has for a long time said that the right option is to have a town fire department. It's clear to me that from a functional standpoint, that when a fire, an emergency occurs, that both departments work very well together. So, it may very well be --
Steve?
It may very well be that we have to explore the other option of indeed making a town fire department. Now, having said that, if that, if we choose to do that, what happens to the fire district? Does that just go away? Do you know, Jim, what happens to it?
No, it has to be a vote to disband the district from the district.
But what if, if the town decides that rather than expanding the district, the town would prefer to have a fire department, an East Windsor Fire Department, with two separate fire companies, Warehouse Point and Broadbrook? What happens to the fire district if the town chooses to go to a town fire department?
Well, I'd like to respond a little bit. I think major problem is that we need really one funding source for the East Windsor Fire Department. And obviously, the town could be a funding source. It was from 1975 until 2015. Before that, the fire departments funded themselves. The only other way that I can see having a funding source would be to have what, and they tried, they tried to expand what they call a district to cover the entire town. So that'd mean that the fire district would be taxing for fire protection in the town. That's one thing you could do, expand the district, and they seem to have failed. The only other solution, if you don't bring it into the town and support it with tax dollars from the town, is to have a special services district that would fund the fire protection in the town. And as you said, we have to work on this. We have to, we tried something, it failed, they have a charter, it'll be interesting to see what it says, but we'll go from there. And I think they're open to other ways than their way, so I think, go ahead.
No, I mean, they're gonna have to get rid of the district. Let it go on in the budget. We have to support the fire departments, or your house is gonna burn to the ground. Okay? It's the way it is. So they become one fire department, they give us their budgets, we know Warehouse Point is gonna be more than East Windsor, we know that. You got all the industrial park, you got everything over there. Basically, over here, we got tobacco sheds, okay? And not much here. So we know they're gonna be more expensive, we understand that already. So we do what we gotta do. We figure it out between the two of them, we put it in the budget. Okay, we approve it, I'm not, please, all right? Don't interrupt me, I'm not in the mood for interruptions tonight, okay? And if we approve it, the only people that can knock it down will be the Board of Finance, and that'll be on their heads. But if it's a fair budget to run, protect the people in this town, then that's the way it should go. But the district has to go away. Enfield, those people are paying $700, $800 a household in those five districts up there. I mean, that's crazy, okay? I mean, they can have the Taj Mahals, if we were charging that down here, God, we could throw a party every Saturday night down here for the people of East Windsor. So, I mean, that's my comment again. Get rid of the district, figure it out, do what we gotta do as far as the budget goes, put it in there, and that's what it's gonna cost them, keep our fire department running and protect the citizens of this town, that's what we gotta do.
Okay, Charlie, you want?
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna solve this tonight, but I do think we have a genuine interest in bringing some solemn to the issue because it's not fair to residents of Warehouse Point to be paying that and also paying for, you know, the parts of Broadbrook, and that's what I started with, you know, as you guys know, a year and a half ago. But just as a quick question, that when you went, because I obviously wouldn't remember this, but when you went from, you know, having the district taxing, and it ended in '69 maybe, somewhere thereabouts?
'75.
'75, okay. And when you went to, you know, where the town supported you financially, was the district dissolved then or no?
No.
Okay.
We just had an agreement with the Board of Selectmen that they would fund us operationally until things got more expensive and they didn't have the money.
Yeah.
So, one question that came up was the buildings. Obviously, the buildings are owned by the district taxpayers, so the town got a legal opinion that they couldn't pay for any repairs to our buildings. So, and that's what basically told us that we need to be on our own, we are an municipality, and that's what we had to do. Funding could be back, could be put back in the budget for us, that's true. We explored that option, somebody was supposed to study it, that never happened. And the other thing you gotta realize is that the two fire departments are very passionate agencies and very passionate about doing their job and their autonomy. And to change something, to make it all one, is gonna be a huge task. It's probably gonna be an expensive task. You know, you may have to go to a full-time fire department right off the bat if you try to force these two organizations together. So that's why we're trying to do it on our own terms, so something like that doesn't happen and it becomes a six to eight million dollar expense a year. And we saw, we saw how the budget process works and, you know, we couldn't get, you couldn't get $232,000 to fund the fire department, and you couldn't get a million dollars to fund the school system. So, I don't think going to one fire, one town fire department is gonna be your answer right off the bat. I think there's other options that are probably more opt to happen, say like a special services district for the Broadbrook District, which would allow you to separate the fire expenses from this side out of the town budget. So, the town budget would all pay one mil rate, and say the Broadbrook Fire Department would pay 1.2 on their fire protection, and Warehouse Point would pay 1.4 on their fire protection, and it still remains separate, which is apparently what some of the departments, some of the people in the departments want. And it wasn't the whole department, they just didn't have enough backing, and I don't know if that was because misinformation got out there or what happened, but I can't really comment on that, you'd have to ask Chief R. Carey from Broadbrook on that, that was after me, so I don't know. But there's other options, there's, the town could do a contracted service with the fire district per year to provide fire protection for the town. There's options that need to be explored, but it needs to be done right away, and we can't let this linger. I mean, I've worked a lot of hours on it. I'll continue to help as much as I can, but, I mean, this has been going on four years for me, so I'm getting a little tired of it. So we need to come to a solution quick.
Yeah, I don't blame you about that background about how you got the money and you didn't dissolve the district, yeah. I guess, well, one, I feel confident with, the attorneys that the town has now are very good and can help to find a solution. And to me, a quick solution at that time would have been that the town lease the buildings from the district, and that way, and then, you know, with a provision that the town's responsible for, the maintenance and repairs, that would have been, that could have been done. But we need to have this, have this workshop, as I call it, you know, fairly quick, and let's just get the broad issues on the table and that we can start to put together, what are some potential solutions for that? I respectfully ask if you would participate in that.
Yeah, of course I would, I mean, I need, we need to get this fixed, so.
Yeah.
And another issue that we see why you're a little hesitant to become part of a new fire district is because of the way, when we came out of the budget, that $485,000 that we were getting that year didn't come out of our town taxes, it just got disseminated somewhere else in the budget, I don't know which budget it went into, but that money didn't come out. So, the people of Broadbrook are gonna say, well, they didn't take the money out of the budget for fire protection when we separated. So that's another issue that we're gonna have to deal with.
So when that money was in there for your budget and in the year that you didn't opt to be part of that, there was no refund?
Right, there was no, that $485,000 that we were getting just went somewhere else on top of the 2 percent increase, or I don't know if that budget failed or not with the Brown. So, really, I think your most viable option is to do that special services district because that money's already there, and the people of Broadbrook will see that money, it's not gonna, they'll know where it is in the budget, because it's gonna stay in the budget, it's just gonna be separated up. It's not gonna be an additional tax. So I think that's the best way we should proceed, or do a contract for fire services.
Okay.
To disband the district is a relatively difficult deal, and I don't think it's a wise one.
Okay, well, Andy, one more thing?
Just one last comment. Should we schedule that workshop that Charlie talks about soon so that we can at least lay out the options that can be pursued in the future?
Well, who would?
The work's been done.
Who would attend the workshop? Would it be the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
That would require a special Board of Selectmen meeting, I think.
Yeah, that, yeah, I guess.
It's okay.
But that'll be all right.
Okay, I'll look into that then.
And whoever the Warehouse Point and Broadbrook Fire Departments choose have attend, but I would think that in, you know, in one workshop session, we could at least outline what the options are.
Okay.
And that'll allow, in the future, you know, going into 2020, the town to start looking at other options. Apparently, the option that was investigated for a long time, over a year, is not one that's gonna work. We learned something.
Yeah, okay.
Bob, can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Jim, when did you guys decide to start the taxing and go to the fire district tax?
Who did we?
When you guys started taxing the people in Warehouse Point, when did that happen?
2015?
Yeah, I believe it was. Actually, it dropped by 2016 when fiscal year started, yeah.
Okay. Just trying to put.
And that was, and that was, we did that on the assumption that they could break the Broadbrook expenses out, and then at the last minute, that couldn't happen. I think it was probably, Jason, you were involved in that, you were on that.
I was here.
Well, you were on the lawyer's fee, right?
Yeah, that wasn't a thing at that point in time. The issue was that the town attorney was not consulted until the 11th hour, and so he got a response at the 11th hour. Had that conversation happened in due course, there would have been a response and plenty of time to make alternative arrangements.
We got the options weeks before that happened.
April 5th, 2016.
Well, whatever. So, that's, that's when it happened.
Yeah, I think the separation of the, actually, at that point, it was the town's mistake. They had, and it left the Warehouse Point Fire District with a choice of going out of business and not protecting the town, or protecting the town and taxing, and they chose to protect the town and tax. They were forced into that, they didn't do it voluntarily. And now, in a sense, the town caused the problem, and we haven't gotten around to correcting it, we can't seem to do it.
So Jim, did this all happen because of the, guess what I'm getting to here? Did this all happen to start taxing the people because of the last administration wouldn't cooperate with you?
No, I wouldn't go that, I was.
I'm going in that direction.
It was, it was an opinion from the town attorney that we should, we are our own municipality and we should act like it, and that's.
Well, I believe in that too.
And that's what, that's what we did, essentially, and then we tried to get back in the budget at that 11th hour when they knew that the taxes couldn't be broken out, and basically, they told us, no, you're out, you're done, we'll see you later. So we didn't have any other option but to tax, and that's what we've been doing for the last four years. Because we actually went to the Board of Finance that year.
2016.
To get, yeah, to get that money back in the budget, so then we would deal with the other taxes, the other expenses for the buildings and stuff on our own. But the Board of Finance voted that not to happen, so.
In 2016.
Yeah, April 2016 or 2015. I don't really, I asked, I was gonna go back, I hope it's not. It's probably 15.
No, Bob was first elect, he didn't take office until November of 15.
Bob was in the first election.
Yeah, but it was when the, I agree with Jason.
Oh yeah, he was first.
You're right.
Okay, well, I think we'll move on, but obviously, this is a topic that's not gonna die. Next is public participation. Any public participation?
Well, I might as well.
Okay, first we'll have Dick, go ahead.
It was the 71st election at the time, and Charlie's idea was presented before all this happened, could have been cured for a dollar, and it was flatly refused immediately. And I sat right there in that seat of Charlie's, and I made the proposal. So, a lot of this is, you know, we're gonna do the same thing again. The money was in the budget, the proposal was made, to lease the buildings for a dollar a year from the district, not transfer them to the town or anything else, but just lease them from the district, and legally, we could have funded the repairs on their property with no repercussions, and it was flatly refused.
Who refused it, Dick?
The members of the commission.
Other names?
I won't mention any names, but it was done, you'll remember it, you should. And we really need to separate the fire departments from the fire district, they're two separate animals. Warehouse Point Fire Department is the men and ladies that do the work. The district is only the funding, like the town is the funding on this side. We really need to separate the two. I don't think anybody in this room or anywhere else is against the fire department, either one of them. They both do a hell of a good job, and they work well together.
Okay, Jim, you wanna say something?
Yeah, James Mark, 108 H3, section, Warehouse Point, Section, East Windsor. I'm also the fire chief of Warehouse Point, and I'm here representing the Warehouse Point Fire Department Incorporated. As you may or may not be aware, in July of 2019, the Warehouse Point Fire Department constructed and installed a sign in front of the Bridge Street Fire Station. This sign is utilized to notify the public of events and deliver several safety messages and tips to our citizens. It has been brought to my attention that there has been several different rumors floating around town, especially at the Gysler supermarket and breakfast establishments concerning our new sign. One rumor was that the town hall was concerned that taxpayers' money was used to install and purchase the sign. With the. and purchase the sign with the brick foundation and the columns. This rumor is completely false. No taxpayers' dollars were spent on this sign project whatsoever. I am providing a public statement that the sign was a donation along with the labor and materials used to build the foundation of the sign. The money for the sign was donated through an estate of a lifetime Warehouse Point Fire District resident. The construction services and materials were donated by firefighters and family of firefighter in the name of his mother, who recently passed away. When it's convenient for family and friends, a dedication ceremony will be held at the fire station. A plaque is installed on the sign dedicating it to individuals responsible for the sign, including the construction. I hope this clears up any rumors and misleading information around town. If there are any questions that have to do with the fire district or fire department, they should, they should be directed to me in order, in order to receive the proper information.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl?
Carolyn Corso, twenty-three Lindsay Lane. Actually, I know you're, I know back and forth, and I get that, but I just have a few questions tonight, because you're gonna go over the East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. And a couple of questions I have is number one, I'm kind of confused right now why this is so important when we're not even sure if the casino is gonna come. And if this, through this entire document, many times, it's saying the budget process, but it only says the Board of Selectmen. So my question is, is it the true budget process, where it goes to you, then it goes to the Board of Finance, then it goes to a referendum? Or does it just go to the Board of Selectmen and off to a referendum? If so, it concerns me again that it's getting a little like the charter and putting control all into one. And actually, I don't either, it should be the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance. It should be more created like the pension board, which has a member from each large board in town, and it also has citizens at large, so that the citizens of the town can take part in that, too. So my question is, if it doesn't follow the typical, that isn't, the typical budget process, is it not in conflict with the charter? And there's a section that goes to added appropriation, and it says only Board of Selectmen, yet in the charter, it does say that it has to only go to Board of Finance for added appropriation. So just some very large concerns I have, and I honestly just don't know why it's so important when we've had two years to do something about this, we're not even sure it's a casino coming, and that all of a sudden, we're trying to get this completed before November, whatever the date is, fifth. So, thank you.
Okay, actually, we're going to go into that. Item eleven B, and we'll read that ordinance you're talking about. Okay, further public participation. Yes?
Jillian Hubbard, forty Mill Street. I am here tonight in representation of the East Windsor Community Cleanup. On October eighteenth to the twentieth, we are having another meet in your neighborhood weekend that we're encouraging all residents in town to participate in. Our goal is to reach all of the different villages within town. We're very heavy and saturated in a great way in Broadbrook and Warehouse Point. We have some reach in Melrose, as well as Skantic and the other areas, but we're trying to really disperse the information as best as possible, so we're kind of calling on all of the neighbors and residents to kind of help us out and participate, as well as just let your friends and neighbors know that it's going on, even if, you know, you're not able to actually participate due to disability or not being in town. If you could just help us spread the word and help clean up the street, that would be great. I have a few flyers there as well. It's also on the East Windsor Community Connection page and the Community Cleanup pages. And if anybody is interested in signing up your street or signing up your name and interested in picking a street to go as a group, let me know. I have a sign up sheet here tonight. And that's, that's about that. So that's October eighteenth to the twentieth. It's anytime that anybody's available. It's no specific set time, so that it's as flexible as can be.
Last year, I participated in that, and I, I think the town gave out garbage bags. Kind of, there was a very loose effort to pick them up, so I don't know if there's any kind of organization this year or not.
Well, in the springtime, there was, actually, Steve had helped with organizing, figuring out how to do the pickup and everything. It was organized then, and it'll be just as organized, if not more organized, this time around, since we have the experience, so I'm not concerned about the organizational skills at all. Eric and I have been actually very active in making sure that everything is, is very organized when it comes to these community cleanup events. She's taking care of that. I'm taking care of the analytical side of things and creating the data so that we can understand who and where we are reaching in town, so that when we do our individual street ops, that we're able to reach the different areas that were less saturated.
Is there a way to contact you, Howard?
Yeah, it's all, it's all, you have the flyer there. You have my email, and everybody through Facebook. You can go to the Community Cleanup. You can email ewcleanup@gmail.com. You can email ewbeautification@gmail.com. You can email jillianleehubbard@gmail.com. You can go to any of the East Windsor forums and throw something out there, and I'll probably see it and reach back out. So if anybody's having a hard time communicating with me, I'll be surprised, but if it's needed, then, you know, ask around. I'm sure somebody will know something.
So are the bags being provided?
What's up?
Plastic bags being-
I will buy the bags myself if I have to. We are encouraging if people want to graciously bring their own bag, that's perfectly great. This isn't something that we're doing a street as individual, like, as a unit, like our individuals be on the street events. This is a meet in your own neighborhood. So we're encouraging people to go outside, pick up some garbage in their own yards and down their street, and put it into their trash can. If they don't mind, that's fantastic. I'm sure that we are going to be able to secure a couple very kind businesses in town to allow us to put any trash bags that are excess. But we are encouraging the residents to clean up in their specific area, if possible, and put it in their trash cans.
See, I live on the south side.
Okay.
And on the south side, you know, people don't usually have trash in their yards.
Okay.
It's where the open fields are and that kind of thing, and it's quite honestly that way throughout the town. So when you pick up this stuff, where are you supposed to leave it? Because it should be left where that field is. Is the town gonna go and pick them up, or, well, how's that gonna work?
So if you would like to sign up for those certain areas that you're talking about, we'll be able to make sure that that area is tended to, but if we don't know where you're picking up and we don't know which area, then that'll be rather hard, but I do understand there is a lot of times where, like, fields, especially the concentrated areas around businesses, which is a whole other ball that we're all interested in getting into with figuring out our flight ordinances. But in the meantime, for example, over on the street next to Walmart, it's a disaster. It just looks like a total disaster zone. What would be really great is if we could get a concentrated number of residents to clean up over there, and Walmart let us use their trash cans, since they're right there. That would be fantastic. As far as-
Have you asked them if they can use it?
I haven't asked them yet, but I think that that would be helpful. But for this specific event, it's really like a meet in your neighborhood, pick up around your house. If you don't have stuff around your house, that's fantastic. If there's specific streets you want us to focus on, then I think that that should be more of a concentrated feet in the street event, where we are planning on taking to specific businesses, and we are planning on taking the trash out of that zone. So I, I would happily, like, encourage you to, to write down those different streets on here.
All right, good.
Because we can add that to the feet in the streets thing, because it sounds more like a feet in the street and not a meet in your neighborhood, but either way, it'll be good to know your, your concerned areas.
Are you talking Newberry Road by Walmart?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, last year, you guys were able to leave out the bags-
Yeah.
-in the driveway at the Jersey Barrier.
Yeah, you, you were very gracious and had us-
So you can do that again.
Okay.
And I'll take care of whatever it is.
For this weekend of the eighteenth to the twentieth?
Whatever you wanna do. If I see the bags there, I'll take them and I'll just take care of them.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you, Steve. I have a, I have a pretty big bag up here. I just need to get through.
And if you do Rice Street?
Yep.
You can leave the bags at ninety-five Rice Street.
Okay. Could you write that down for me?
Okay, and then I'll take care of it over there, 'cause I have a piece of property up in the back there also.
Awesome. If you wanna just put a little asterisk next to the addresses for drop off, that would be really helpful.
So you want me to write my-
Yeah, just do one space so that I know it's separate. Thanks, Steve. So, yeah, just write down the different addresses that you're speaking of, and also your phone number, so that I can let you know any future events that are going on, so that you know when we're dropping stuff off, because, you know, we're being recorded right now, and they don't want you to think we're dumping a whole bunch of stuff.
Leave it at the end of the driveway. I'll see it every day, and I'll, we'll take-
I'll just let you know when it's us.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you. And if any of you guys wanna sign up for a street, that would be awesome. Thanks.
Okay. Further public participation. Okay, hearing done. Last chance. We'll go on to Amy and our new accounting system news.
All right, you guys should have gotten a memo, hopefully.
Yep.
So I am in the process of doing that. We have had eight days of training and setting up. We are working together with the Board of Ed for these trainings and setting up. There is a total of sixty-four days that they will be here training and setting up both the town and the Board of Ed, and that was not included in the contract price that I bought the CIP. So I'm asking for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. It covers the cash management module, which we didn't buy, but we need to do bank recs and the travel related to the people coming here to train us and set it up. And we have ninety-five thousand dollars in the Selectmen unallocated, which sixty, I think sixty-three thousand of it was earned as interest last year and during last fiscal year. So I'm asking of the transfer to come out of that account. So it'd be a transfer from one CIP project, from an unallocated to a CIP project.
All out of funding.
All out of what?
Fund eight, CNR.
Yes, all of the CNR. Yes. Yes, Steve.
This twenty-two thousand five hundred is what the Board of Ed?
Nope. It's for the travel relating to the implementation consultant, the trainers that will be training us how to train other people and how to train our staff how to use it.
Okay.
But we're, it's a combined system. The hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that's in that project already, which is in the CNR, there's already a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in there, but it didn't have travel in it relating to them coming from Maine and training us and setting things up.
So how, you just mentioned the Board of Ed.
They're part of, it's, it's town and Board of Ed together.
You're part of it.
Yep. We'll both be on the same financial software, using the same chart of accounts.
Okay.
We're building it now.
And that's, that's uniform across state, right?
Yes, we're trying to set it up to the uniform chart of accounts. And we will be the first town on Munis with a unified chart of accounts. It's kinda scary.
So this, this, is part of that twenty-two for the Board of Ed as well, or?
Well, it's for the whole Munis project. So in CNR, I just have one project called Munis.
Okay.
There's one set of consultants coming.
Right, there's one set of people coming for all of us.
Okay. And it doesn't matter, it's the same.
I, I'm in charge of the project, so I put the project in originally last year.
Yeah. How did they break out the, is this strictly travel for twenty-two?
Well, no, well, no, it's, it's, there's a total of sixty-four training days for setting up. So right now, we're setting up. We're saying, how is it gonna look? How, what are our funds gonna be? What are our functions gonna be? What are our departments gonna look like?
Mm-hmm.
And we're setting it all up with the uniform chart of accounts through their systems. We're setting up how our accounts receivable are gonna work, how our accounts payable are gonna work, how payroll's gonna work. So there's a lot of processes that have to happen. We will not be live on this until next July.
Yeah, okay.
But that's the process, and I have spent, I can't tell you how many hours already working on it, getting us going and set up in the right direction. But this is related to hotel mileage, meals for their, the sixty-four days that their people will be here, getting us up to speed.
Is that an estimate, or is that-
It's a guess, yep.
It's a guess, so it could be more.
Hopefully not. We guessed on the high side.
Okay.
We guessed two hundred and thirty dollars a day or two hundred and fifty dollars a day, so.
Okay.
How many people do you train?
Well, it depends on what it is. We've had as many as all seven of us at some of the meetings. There's seven people, four on the Board of Ed and three on the town side, me and both my staff, doing it right now. But we will train, when we get to the end, we will be training end users how to enter requisitions. Board of Ed will be training how to enter people's payroll, so they will be going right down to the admins that are actually doing the work.
Okay.
And when you remove the twenty-two K, twenty-two five hun, uh, five hundred from the un, from the unallocated, how's it gonna hurt that account?
It's not. It gives you seventy thousand dollars to allocate to somewhere else. Last year, we allocated-
No, I understand that, but we set up a, we set up a number of, of, you know, ninety-seven, ninety-five, seven. We must have done that with some-
No, there's no, there's no budget tied to it at all. This is unallocated money. So last year, you had money in there, and you sent fifty-five of it over to the Broadbrook Fire Station to redo the kitchen for the senior center over there. So this got replenished because we earned interest all year, so at the end of the year, when we closed the books, it becomes available.
Okay.
And so this money is available for any CIP project that happened to come up that you didn't have allocated money for.
And it's been sitting in fund eight for fifteen years, which is what you would be spending. It's not like this is part of our operating budget. This is money that could have been there for a long period.
It's not, it's not an allocation. This is what, so, so, so if I finish Munis and I don't need all of that money, that's gonna become available to, I'll be back asking you guys to close that project-
Yeah.
-and move the money back to unallocated. We did it last year when we did the kitchen. We closed a bunch of projects. We closed a Board of Ed project that had thirty thousand dollars left in it, moved that up there.
So there's really no option. We gotta do this.
I think so. I mean-
So what else do you do?
We wanna be successful.
Train yourself?
We, we do have to do it.
Right.
We don't necessarily have to do it right now, but we have the money right now, so we might as well do it.
And no, I can't train myself.
Yeah, also-
Or everybody else.
I think it requires the Board of Selectmen to approve this.
Yeah, well, it's a transfer. Yes.
Yeah, so that's-
That's what I'm looking for. I'm here looking for approval.
I move to approve the request to transfer twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars from CNR unallocated to CNR IT.
I'll send that.
Okay, further discussion? Most in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you. Yep.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks.
Okay, the next agenda item is to approve October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Sorry, you said someone might be here?
Yes, there's a representative here from the network.
Okay. So because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the town of East Windsor wants to take this opportunity to focus awareness on domestic violence, and to do that, we wanna give you a proclamation and also put it around the town. We're gonna put this proclamation on Facebook and the town website, we'll put it, post it here in the town hall and the town annex, and so what I'll do is, I'll read this proclamation to you and give it to you, and then we as a board can approve the proclamation. So this is the proclamation. If you wanna come up here, I'll read it. It says, "The Town of East Windsor Proclamation." It says, "Whereas domestic violence is an epidemic and an issue that may, that many are unaware of, one in four women will experience domestic violence during their lifetime one in four women will experience domestic violence during their lifetime and is the third leading cause of homelessness among families. Whereas domestic violence is not just physical, abuse can be also sexual, psychological, emotional, or financial. Digital abuse and stalking count also. Whereas domestic violence can negatively impact a person's mental and physical health over the long term and his or her children, mental well-being is also at risk and the long-term damage. Each year, two million injuries and a hundred, one thousand three hundred deaths are caused as a result of domestic violence. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support of numerous organizations, individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now therefore, I, Robert Maynard, First Selectman of the Town of East Windsor, to hereby proclaim October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the Town of East Windsor." Proclamation.
Thank you, I'm Elise, I'm an advocate, a victim advocate and hotline advocate for the network, and I work at the safe house in Enfield. And I just want to thank the Town of East Windsor for this proclamation, it means a lot to us over at the network. Domestic violence is a huge issue, our state's safe houses are pretty much nonstop full, and there's a constant need for attention being brought to this issue, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I move to, I move to proclaim October 2019 Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the Town of East Windsor.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you. Sure.
I was wondering, on October 24th, it is National Wear Purple Day. It's, the state of Connecticut is participating and many communities in the state are participating, and I was wondering if as a town, we could participate on October 24th, and a motion would be required for that.
Oh, okay. So that would be Wear Purple as part of National Awareness Month?
Yeah, it's National Wear Purple Day. I have, I printed out some information on it if you'd like. Can I come up for it?
Okay, Charlie said he'd make the motion, but sure.
Sure, yeah, this is just some information with what the network does, we, there's an event at East Windsor High School on October 10th as well.
I don't have a lot of purple.
I'll get you something.
I think I have one shirt.
Okay, I'll make a motion that East Windsor dedicates October 24th as a statewide Wear Purple Day.
Okay, I'll second it. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move on to the, to discuss and approve Casino Impact Ordinances. And, the first one we'll deal with is the new ordinance, which would be the distribution ordinance. Would tell how, and actually, it's in your blue packet. We've been working on this for about a month now, and what's in your blue packet, Bob DiCrescenzo, who was our town attorney, read this and did, made some changes to it to take, as Geraldine said, into account more the Board of Finance. So, it's three pages, we'll read it, I've read it over, it looks good to me, and it's, and so, we'll go from there. Town of East Windsor, East Windsor Casino Impact Fund Distribution Ordinance. The following ordinance was adopted at a special town meeting duly-worn and held on blank 2019. Ordinance regarding the distribution of funds from the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. Whereas the ordinance establishing the Casino Impact Fund entitled Ordinance Regarding the Creation of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund states, "The CIF shall ensure that issues associated with the casino are dealt with in a manner that supports the growth of East Windsor, quality of life, infrastructure, and public services. The procedure and process for the distribution will be determined through a separate ordinance. Whereas the town wishes to ensure the expenditure of such funds are made consistent with the town charter and for purposes set forth in the ordinance establishing the Casino Impact Fund, the fund. And whereas the town wishes to ensure the duly authorized voters of the town shall make the final decision by referendum as to the expenditure items, line items, amounts, and purposes for these, for said expenditures. Whereas the town wishes to have the fund expenditures, line items, line items appear on the ballot in the annual budget referendum. Now therefore, the following shall be the process for annual expenditures from the fund. The Casino Impact Fund Distribution. Distributions from the fund shall be in accordance with the process and date to be included in the guidelines established by the Board of Selectmen for the annual budget process. With oversight of the Board of Selectmen, the First Selectmen shall coordinate and manage the preparation of the casino fund distribution request for the ensuing fiscal year. On or before the date established in the annual budget guidelines, every office, of every official office, board, commission, agency, or department seeking an appropriation from the fund shall submit to the First Selectmen a degree, a, or design, designee, including information they possess, including, but not limited to, records, books, accounts, contracts, reports, and other papers backing up information and documents, recording specific CIF distribution requests. The Board of Selectmen, following the consultation with the Town Treasurer, determine what form of officials, offices, boards, commissions, agencies, and other departments shall submit the required information. On or before the date the annual budget guidelines set forth, the First Selectmen shall submit, the fund distribution request to the Board of Selectmen. Submission shall include the amount of money available for appropriation in the fund for the ensuing fiscal year. The purpose, proposed appropriation from the fund shall be included in the proposed Board of Selectmen Annual Town Budget for the ensuing fiscal year as submitted by the Board of Finance." Submit, yes.
That's, that should be changed, that by should be to.
Okay.
To the Board of Finance.
Okay. Said submission shall include, okay, sorry. The proposed appropriation from the fund shall be included in the proposed Board of Selectmen Annual Town Budget for the ensuing fiscal year. As submitted to the Board of Finance, okay. Public hearings. On or before the date the annual budget guidelines set forth, the Board of Selectmen shall, at the outset of its deliberations, conduct at least one public hearing on the fund distribution request and distribution. Notice of said hearing shall be published within five days after the submission of the Casino Impact Fund Distribution Request to the Board of Selectmen. The public hearing may coincide and be part of the public hearings referred to in Section 8-4 Budget Proceedings of the Town Charter. Three, the, the fund distribution message. The fund distribution shall include a distribution message which shall be available at the first public hearing. The distribution message shall contain the recommendations of the Board of Selectmen, a description of the important features of the fund distribution plan on a line item format, and explanation of all major increases or decreases and changes in the distribution, recommendations as compared to the prior year, and a summary of the proposed distribution. The Casino Impact Fund Distribution shall be a public record in the office of the town clerk and shall be open to public inspection. The Casino Impact Fund Distribution related materials shall be printed by the town at the time of its submission to the public. Or on or before the date set forth in the annual budget guidelines, the Board of Selectmen shall direct the Casino Impact Fund Distribution's requests are published. Submission of the budget to referendum. The initial referendum, the initial budget referendum, the fund distribution as approved by the Board of Finance shall be submitted to the voters of the town by line item in the proposed town budget as part of the budget referendum to be held on the second Tuesday of the month of May. Any subsequent submission of the town distribution to the referenda should be part of the annual budget referendum when possible. The referenda outcomes. Approval of the Casino Impact Fund Distribution following the budget referendum. If the Casino Impact Fund Distribution is approved by the majority voting on it on, at a referendum, official copies of the Casino Impact Distribution Fund as finally, finally approved shall be adopted and filed with the town clerk within five days of approval. Failure of the Casino Impact Fund Distribution following initial budget referendum. If the Casino Impact Fund Distribution or any line item portion thereof fails at the initial referendum, the Casino Impact Fund Distribution or the portion of the Casino Impact Fund that failed shall be returned to the Board of Selectmen who shall, following a public hearing, submit a Casino Impact Fund Distribution or that portion of the Casino Impact Fund Distribution that failed to a second referendum to be held on the fourth Tuesday of May. Failure of the Casino Impact Fund Distribution following the second budget referendum. If the Casino Impact Fund Distribution or any line item portion thereof fails the third referendum, the, those expenditures, expenditure items in the Casino Impact Fund Distribution that did not pass the referendum shall be adopted and filed, that did pass, I did, did pass the referendum shall be adopted and filed with the town clerk within five days. Expenditures from the Casino Impact Fund Distribution not adopted by the referendum or supplemental appropriation shall not be allowed. Supplementary appropriations from the Casino Impact Fund. Upon request of any board, office, commission, or similar body that additional funds in excess of what had been provided in the approved annual Casino Impact Fund Distribution, or if funds are required for which no provision was made in the annual Casino Impact Fund Distribution, the Board of Finance, upon recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, after inquiry into review of the request, may approve one or more appropriations. All appropriations from the Casino Impact Fund shall be approved by a town meeting. Six, spending and accomplishments for each expenditure item appropriated from the fund shall be reported to East Windsor Treasurer's Office quarterly. The town annual report shall contain a separate section that discusses the status of the fund's activities. The section shall report spending and accomplishments for each expenditure item. Unexpected funds that exceed two-hundred percent of the annual MMCT contribution shall be returned to the general fund for the express purpose of reducing taxes. And that is the distribution fund ordinance that we're considering tonight. Any comments or thoughts?
Why don't we make a motion to?
Okay.
To approve it, then you can open up for discussion.
That sounds good to me. I move to approve the ordinance regarding the distribution of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund as presented at tonight's meeting and move the ordinance to a town meeting scheduled for October 17th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. Jason?
In number seven, where it reads, where you go over. Unexpected funds that exceed two-hundred percent of the annual MMCT contribution shall be returned to the general fund for the express purpose of reducing taxes. What do you mean by the annual MMCT contribution?
Well, the annual MMCT contribution is three, three million dollars.
So you're talking about the impact payment, not about the, the total collection from that entity, taxes included?
Yeah, that's true.
So that, that should be clarified.
Okay, so unexpected, unexpected funds that exceed two-hundred percent of the annual MMCT, three-hundred million dollar, three, three million dollar contribution?
In the development agreement between the town and the tribal alliance is referred to as an impact payment, so you should refer to it, I think, Counselor, correct me if I'm wrong. I would refer to it as, as an impact payment, just as it is in the development agreement.
The annual MMCT impact payment. So that should read unexpected funds that exceed two-hundred percent of the annual MMCT impact payment shall be returned to the general fund for the express purpose of reducing taxes. Okay, sounds good.
How many line items does this intend?
We're going to have one line item for every request.
Every request in department, every request within a department, every.
It says, "Whereas the town wishes to ensure the duly authorized voters of the town shall make the final decision by referendum as to the expenditure items, line item amounts and purposes for said expenditures." A line item. I think.
So does that mean that if we're asked, can I ask him a question?
Well, you can ask it through the chair, you can ask me a question.
Let me ask you. Does that, does that suggest that if there is a line item for the building department to purchase copy paper, and there's a line item for the building department to have mileage reimbursement, that those would be separate votes at the referendum?
I would, this, these line items will be determined by the Board of Selectmen. And so, they will be what the Board of Selectmen determines to be, if I've interpreted correctly.
Is Amy still here?
No, she does not.
So we're, we're just adopting the Munus Uniform Chart of Accounts, which means we can't just rename line items whatever we want, they're going to be, they're going to be fixed. So you're going to have a mileage reimbursement or a travel line, you're going to have an office supply line. So, given that you're going to have whatever those, those standard uniform across the state, line names are referred to. In that circumstance, where you have the building department asking for supplies and the building department asking for travel reimbursement, is that going to be one vote or two?
I think what you're doing here is taking, you're going down on a very detailed level, and you're, you're missing the whole concept of this Casino Impact Fund. It says right here, "The CIF shall ensure that issues associated with the casino are dealt with in a manner that supports the growth of East Windsor, quality of life, infrastructure, and public services." That's what our goal is. And if you, if you as a member of the Board of Selectmen and the, was, the Public Works Department comes in and says they need copy paper, if you feel that that is of such importance that you should put that into the distribution of the fund, then yes, it would be a separate line, I doubt very much that that would occur.
Okay, well, I, I'm not sure that that's an answer to my question, but I'll, I'll ask another. In the event that you have, we'll use that, those same two examples, the building department who is putting in for travel reimbursement, but the Public Works Department is saying that they need, because of the impact of the casino, they need, I'm going to say an extra two-hundred thousand dollars for operational costs. Can you vote on a departmental budget for Public Works? Can you vote on a departmental budget for Public Works, but you have to vote on the office supply line for the building department? Or is that does that need to be uniformly broken out? And if so, are we breaking that out by department level or line level?
I I think I I'm gonna move on because I'm I'm not I'm.
I'm already asking, that's not clear.
It doesn't matter. It will be clear when they they put it out. And and those details can be this is an ordinance on how to distribute it. Those questions are not answered in anything in our there might be procedures that that are developed in the by the selectmen as as your questions are not answered anywhere in this town now. And 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 they're going to change when munis is implemented. So to criticize this ordinance because they're not it's not specifying the details of munis, which we won't even don't even know at this time, is is not it's is rather invalid. And I think it's I I.
So you misunderstood. I wasn't being critical. I was I was asking a clarifying question. Now, the process currently is available to do that by way of the Board of Finance. They have that authority to specify that demarcation under the general statutes. So our current.
Now, general statutes, you're talking about the Connecticut General Statutes?
Right.
Okay.
So they have the ability to determine the number of or the amount of detail that's available when there's a budget referendum. This seems to me, as I read this, seems to be specifying what that level of detail is, and I'm just trying to get clarity on what that specificity is.
Bob, you want?
Yeah, the way I make these two ordinances, they really have to be read together. First ordinance, the short ordinance, really sets up a special revenue fund for the money's coming in from the impacts.
Casino Impact Fund, the CIF.
CIF. You have a number of special revenue funds already. This is more like your CNR than it is your general fund budget. The way I read these two is that the the first one sets up a special revenues fund because these payments are not taxes, they're probably non-recurring payments. They need to recur, but they don't you don't have the authority to compel them into resmine contract. So it's money that's not not part of the grant levy, so you're deciding, separate it out as a special revenue fund and dedicate it for certain purposes. The second ordinance says it's a process by which really the Board of Selectmen recommends to the Board of Finance as part of the Board of Selectmen's budget, how a portion of this special revenue fund shall be spent in any given fiscal year. And the process laid out in the proposed ordinance in sub paragraphs one, D and F, basically says the Board of Selectmen will give fair hearing to the town agency that would like to participate in the funding to propose projects. Board of Selectmen decide which of those projects to send on to the Board of Finance as part of the regular budget process. And just like you do something very similar to CNR, they'll say these five projects will be funded this year. But instead of CNR's funded out of general fund revenues, this will be funded out of the revolving fund. So in terms of the detail of what goes on in the Board of Finance, that's really up to the Board of Selectmen.
Does it need to be consistent?
No, it can be. Because munis really munis is a lot of things, but munis charter accounts and finance regulations that's all here's towards general fund revenue expenditures, that's where the charter accounts go to. All towns or downtown I know of have also these special revenue funds. We have a forming arts center that they sell tickets to, make the money in, spend it in the art center. It's not general funds, it's a special revenue fund account. So the revenue in and the spending goes out are all part of the budget process, but they're described differently or can be described differently. So the building department came in and said, you know, the building is crazy there, we need another part-time assistant building official to keep up with it all. That's the sort of thing I could envision being funded on this because it's an impact. You don't need the assistant building official to this facility. And then so the appropriation to fund part-time building official will be part of the submission to the Board of Finance. I want to stress, though, that it has to follow the same process as any other appropriation. It has to go to the Board of Finance and the Board of Finance has to include it into the regular budget and has to be supported in the referendum, in the budget referendum. Supplemental appropriations, same thing, same process spelled out in charter. Doesn't matter where the money comes from. Once at Nancy Town Hall, it's town money and it has to be spent according to what the charter says.
So again, could we do an appropriation for the Public Works Department and copy paper in the building department? Or do you need to be more detailed with Public Works or less detailed?
The level of detail will be up to the Board of Selectmen at that time and then up to the Board of Finance to say, hey, we need more detail or this is this is fine, we need more.
Jason, do you have a point for asking these questions?
No, he's actually answering my question.
Okay.
I do have another one, though, based on his answer, and I'm happy to ask you. He said that in order for really to get to the answer to to the question that I was driving at, both of these need to pass. So what happens if only one of them passes?
Well, that that's well, if if only one of them passes, if if this one passes and this other one fails, this this would 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 be invalid. If this first one passes and the second one fails, that's fine because the first one is very short. All it does is establish the fund. The first one establishes fund and we voted on this one, Jason, here, and we approved the first one. The Board of Selectmen has approved this first ordinance. That's been approved by us. We just have to send it to a town meeting. If the second one fails, the second one fails, and then that's up to the new Board of Selectmen to at the at the appropriate time when they want to have a make a way to distribute this fund. But the first the first ordinance will establish the fund, so if we do get a payment from MMCT, an impact payment, it'll go right into this fund. So that's the answer. Jim?
Could I just ask one question? Listening to the document you read, it seems like if if the fire department issue does not get resolved and we don't become a town department, it totally cuts the Warehouse Point Fire District out of any impact money and we're gonna be greatly impacted by that if it does happen.
I I it's not intended that. This says this impact Casino Impact Fund, right here it says this.
Also, I heard what you have to be a town department and.
Uh.
Can you clarify that?
Okay, if you can clarify, but my go ahead.
So Chief, if you'll recall, when the development agreement was negotiated in February of 17, you guys had had you were taxing at that point and there wasn't at that point, there didn't seem to be any instance of you coming back into the budget. So the development agreement was specifically negotiated for so that the casino would have a fixed assessment value for a five-year period. They wanted to give us a fixed income value, which we didn't wanna we didn't accept because the district using its taxing authority at that point in time would have had no comp to to levy the the mill rate against that $300 million building. So you wouldn't have been able to to collect any tax revenue off of it at that time. And now you're thinking, again, this is February of 2017, the having that fixed assessment gives the district an opportunity to say, okay, the 70 percent of the fair market value of what they have agreed for five years is a $300 million building is your tax revenue.
Right, that's our tax revenue, but that's not impact money. It's a different it's a different it's just like you guys are getting tax money and you're getting impact money. And that impact money is supposed to be for public safety because it's gonna be a great impact on public issues. So my concern is that the Warehouse Point Fire District, in that ordinance, sounds like it's totally cut out because you have to be in the town's budget process, which we're not, and you have to be a town department sound.
I think, let's read this, that paragraph here.
One C includes town agency, I think, fire.
Yes, it says on or before the date established in the in the annual budget guidelines, every official office, board, commission, agency, or department.
What's your mill rate?
1.4.
Maybe.
At a mill rate of 1.4 mill, your tax revenue would be $294,000.
Correct.
You knew that?
Yeah, but it doesn't address the impact money.
But maybe we would maybe we should add to this C, something that.
Fire district.
Fire.
Specifically call out fire.
Okay, you should add the Warehouse Point Fire District like you did with the taxing.
Yeah, um, yeah. Is there a more general way we could say that?
Special district?
Special town.
Political subdivision.
Special district, political subdivision. Who are you going to allocate to the Warehouse Point Fire District?
Well, I I wondered if we could make it more general because maybe there are some the library, could the library come and and ask for that?
I think town agency covers the library and arguably covers the fire district, but if you want to be explicit, you could say.
Okay.
Different subdivision of the town.
That would limit it to just the district.
So we could say.
Political subdivision would not include the library or not.
No, because I don't think you need to include the library because I think that's covered by town agency. But if you want, I mean, it's better to be explicit than to leave something out and have somebody say, well, you can't get. Actually, the Board of Selectmen could be sponsoring town department to make a contribution to the library, to the fire district, to any publication you want.
Well, let's let's put the Warehouse Point Fire Department in here. District, okay.
Jim, you're collecting almost $300,000 more dollars on tax.
That doesn't address the.
So what, it's $300,000 more?
So you guys are collecting $5 million more. Why 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 can't I get some impact money?
Well, you can you can apply for.
What the hell is the impact to you guys on that casino? Tell me.
Okay, okay, let's let's. Hey, okay, this is a back and forth and we don't want this. All right, so I'm I'm gonna we'll vote on that. Now, Marie, you would like to say something.
I have a question for the chief, though. Have you done an assessment on what the impact would be?
Come on, this is this is getting out to detail where we don't need to be.
Yeah, the casino might not even show up.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, so first thing I will I would make a motion that to, one C, we add the Warehouse Point Fire District. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you in favor, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Is there any other changes that?
Do you want to add the change of one F? Click on by and say two.
Okay.
After that is submitted.
Yeah, okay, I think, okay. I move we change in what?
Why don't we just add included in that other motion to do that?
Well, I'm gonna add two more.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll say that in I move to add change by to two in one F and to change in number seven, contribution to impact payment. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, the original motion, it's here. Okay, the original motion that's been moved in second is is to is to approve the ordinance regarding the distribution of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund as presented tonight, as amended tonight, Board of Selectmen meeting and move it to a town meeting scheduled for October 17, 2019. So let's so in further discussion on this ordinance as amended that we're approving. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Unopposed.
Now, the other one is in, I believe it's in this package. I guess it's not. It was in your packet. And this is the one that we approved on October 4, 2018, but I want to amend it.
On October 4, 2018?
But I don't think it's in that package. It's in the packet, it should be in the packet that. Yeah, it's in it's 11B in the in the packet that was sent out on Tuesday. And this this was approved, but what I want to do now is change part two of it. It said part two of it, there's only two parts. Part two of it says, "The CIF shall ensure that the issues associated with the casino are dealt with in a manner that supports the growth of East Windsor, quality of life, infrastructure, and public services. The procedure and process of the distribution will be determined in that cross out, take out the four words, add a later date, and just say determined through a separate ordinance." Because it could be.
Does that include blight? Can we have that in there? Because we need to we need to rectify blight issues and that's gonna be a big business creating a lot of trash and there's a lot of us volunteers trying to take care of that, but if we're having businesses coming in like that, that's a lot of trash.
I agree with what you're saying, but not can't be part of this.
Why not? It says that basically, just not quite.
Just not quite.
It's got pretty much everything else in there.
Yeah. It was it's covered by pretty much everything else in here, but so I'll make a motion for that.
Did you just give me the second part of the motion before we got it?
I didn't really make a mo I I'm just gonna say as presented. And I think what I'd like to do is rescind the motion that we that we made prior and approve the motion that's being presented here. Is that understandable? Okay.
With a rewording?
Yes. I move to rescind the motion to approve the ordinance regarding the creation of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund as approved by the Board of Selectmen. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This doesn't feel a little rushed to everybody?
I'm changing four words.
I'm talking about the whole process here.
Okay. What we're doing tonight is passing some ordinances in an agreement so we can have a town meeting on October 17. That's what we're doing. And you can vote no when you have voted no.
Yeah, no problem, David.
So going back, I made a motion to rescind the motion to approve the ordinance regarding the creation of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund approved by the Board of Selectmen. And there was a second. Who's second here? Okay, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the regarding the ordinance regarding the creation of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. As presented at tonight's meeting, uh, and move to a town meeting scheduled for October 17th. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
We are rushing, we need, we're going to make mistakes here that are going to be difficult to undo after we go through a town meeting that's going to be forwarded to a referendum. So, we need to make sure that we're doing this right and we're rushing.
Thank you, Jason, any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. And I'll just say that these can be voted down, that's not a problem. Also, these are ordinances, and they can be changed at a town meeting. That's all it takes to change an ordinance. Now, going on to the next, what's the next? Tracks. Now. We have been talking for months about joining the Tyler Regional Animal Care Shelter in, um. South Windsor. And in your packet is the agreement that we would have to approve to do that. And that's what I'd like to do now. So, I move that pursuant to the Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-339C, the Town of East Windsor be asked to delegate to the first selectman the authority to ratify or reject the inter-local amended facility sharing agreement, regional animal control facility, by or among the towns of East Windsor, Manchester, East Hartford, South Windsor, as presented at tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting, and move it to a town meeting scheduled for October 17th, 2019. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
It is the best thing, number one, for the animals involved, it's the best thing for the taxpayers and the expense to the town.
Okay, further discussion? Jason?
What alternatives have been considered?
The alternative is to pay $61,000 to refurbish our current, um, animal care shelter. And even then, it wouldn't bring it up to near the level that this animal shelter that is a minute and a half away from our town line is. This has been considered over and over again, we have, and you've been here when we've been considering it.
Yeah, I know this, I know this is an alternative, what are the other ones?
To keep our one we have.
Those are the only two choices that are available?
That's the only ones that make any sense.
So, so what else has been considered, is my question?
None.
Okay. What, what was the response from the union about, um, the impact on bargaining unit work?
We didn't question the union. But do you have any information in that regard?
Well, I know the ACOs are part of the police union, and so if, if there is going to be an impact or, or a diminishment of bargaining unit work, that could, that would lead to agreements.
Okay.
So, so, have we had those conversations?
We, I, we are going to have a town meeting on this.
So we have not had that conversation?
I have not had a lawyer verify it, but with the, uh, top, Bob Leach, the chairman of the, um.
Police Commission.
Police Commission, thank you very much. Has spent $4,000 to answer that question, but he won't tell me the answer he got. But our attorney, Josh Hawx-Ladd, did that work for $4,000. So, before the town meeting, I will call up Josh Hawx-Ladd and see if I can get him to give me the information he worked so hard to develop. If not, I will talk to another attorney in labor, uh, concerns.
My question wasn't about Josh or Bob, or, my question was, have we had that conversation? Have US management had that conversation with the bargaining unit?
No.
Yeah, I, I have brought that up for quite some time.
I have, no, and I've been trying for quite some time to get Josh Hawx-Ladd's, but I haven't asked him directly, so now I'll ask him directly. And if that, I don't think it's anything, and like I say, you'll have the answer to that question when you vote on this thing. Any further questions you'd like me to answer?
That, that's still not what I'm, that's still not what I'm asking, Bob. I'm not asking.
Ask again.
I don't know what, what Bob and Josh are working on, I have no idea what that is. What I'm asking is, have, has the management side of the table approached the union side of the table about what the impact on the contract is?
No.
You don't think that's something that we should do?
I am going to do that. Steve?
Is this the, uh, contract that all the other towns are assigned?
Yes.
Same thing, everything?
Yes.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, what in the hell does the union care, which dog pound we deliver a dog to?
That's what we're going to find out.
Because I'm going to get that thing that I asked from Amy back when we were doing the budget, and we were talking about this. And she got it for me, I can't find it because I got a stack of papers like this, and I can't find it. But I'm going to ask her for it again. And if I recall, like Charlie says, follow the money, had to do, I believe, with losing something like $50,000 if we closed that dog pound. Okay, that's what this is about.
Who's going to lose $50,000?
It was something that Amy had gave me, gave me that I asked for. She brought it to another meeting, you know, during the budget process, and it totaled, it was $50,000. It was a lot of money.
For, who's going to lose it?
Well, I believe it's the police department that will lose that money.
Well, okay, we don't know about this.
I saw with my own eyes.
All we know is it's, it's possible.
So I'm going to ask her for that, so to verify what I'm talking about. I don't have the paper in front of me tonight. But who the hell cares where the dogs go? I mean, come on.
No, no, I do.
This is so ridiculous, Bob. You know it, and I know it, and everybody knows it. Everybody's laughing about this. You know, why are you guys arguing over a stupid dog pound? And it's logical to go there. I mean, when I go on vacation, I let my dogs loose down there, so they'll pick them up and put them in the Taj Mahal. Then I pick them up when I come home. I don't have to spend $500 for housing.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm kidding right now, so. I thought about it, though.
Okay, I think we're getting out of control here.
A little bit.
Charlie, want to say something?
We've gone on this since April, we've had data since April, we've asked questions, you know, with, with the police commission, we've gotten no responses. We have not been able to get on their agenda. It's our responsibility as the stewards of the town to provide a facility to put the animals in. We found something that is much more suitable than what we have. We're talking about an annual expenditure of, I believe it's around $2,000 for everything, including the food and whatever, and, um, we, we got things brought to us from the time I've been in here, spending $220,000, $270,000 without drawing pictures or anything, or any backup data. Pictures of a similar building was going to be put up. So we've gone through too many strengths with this thing. It's a sound proposition, the other towns don't have problems with the employees going there, they've got a much further distance to go than what we do. We need to move this along and stop talking about it.
Okay. I'm, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now, moving on to, uh, discussion in approving the WPCA ordinance reductions. And. We have, Paul Anderson has brought to our attention and requested that we reduce the number of ordinances, uh, for the WPCA because they have procedures that cover a lot that's in these ordinances. And, um, we looked at this, and there's a recommendation that, that Bob DiCresenzo made regarding this, and, uh, it's in, in your, your blue folder. And the existing ordinances, um, were, um, 66-2, the ordinance that created the sewer authority, and then there's a 87.1, and an ordinance 89.2, and an ordinance, uh, 90-7, and an ordinance of 1401, dash 01. And these are Bob's recommendations, he, and you can jump in, uh, if, if, to add more, but the, um, the recommendation, creating the sewer authority, um, was amended, and, and that amendment is in here, and. One thing it does is to change the name of, and here from Sewer Commission to Water Pollution Control Authority. And there were some more things you put in there, could you explain about that?
Yeah, I put in, paragraph four that's in the draft is taking out of the WPCA's set of statutes is the powers of the Water Pollution Control Authority, so that, uh, it would become part of the ordinance explicitly, and it would inform the reader of what those powers and duties are. It suspenders in the belt, the statute has these powers in them. By putting it into ordinance, you know, explicit what the particular WPCA's powers and duties are. The other changes merely, get merely antiquated Title Sewer Commission, you know, this was a regular fact, 1966. It updates it to the national statute, which now would refer to the Water Pollution Control.
So the.
Other than that, there's no substantive change in this proposed amendment of the ordinance.
Okay, so this, paragraph number four just aligns it with the Connecticut State.
Aligns it with the statute.
Connecticut State General Statutes. Okay, and, and so you recommend that we implement this?
I would recommend that you propose this as an amendment to ordinance 66-2, that's really updating the name, articulating the power to do with the WPCA.
Okay, and then 87, which is an ordinance allowing adjustment in sewer assessment payments for elderly property owners, since their regulations do that, it's not necessary to have that in an ordinance. Is that my under, is that correct?
Well, I, I, look, I liked it in the ordinance because this particular ordinance is bringing a tax benefit to certain individuals, and the power to tax comes under an ordinance, and I think it needs, I think it should have a more substantial footing than regulation.
Okay.
Because the statutes which provide this authority come from Title 12 of the statutes. You can repeal the ordinance and rely on the regulation, but I think it's a stronger position to begin to have it as an ordinance because these general statutes which allow towns to do this call for it to be done by ordinance.
Okay. And the other one, you, uh, I'll, I'll read what your recommendation for A9-2. I do not recommend repeal of this ordinance until the full implications of the repeal are known by the Board of Selectmen, so we need more study on that.
Yeah, I think A9-2, 90-7 are kind of taken together, you know, I, I read through them, and I, I just, it'd be cautious, I don't want to create a hole, because if you pass the first one, you've got 66-2 creating a new ordinance. Don't recommend repealing 1401, the reason we talked about. And I just was not certain as to whether or not repealing the two in between would create a hole between 66-2, 1401, it may not, and it may be covered by the regulation, but I, I was not certain of that, so I don't recommend it. It could be repealed at a later date if you doubt the other one.
Okay, so, Paul, is it, would it be all right with you if we, we, or? How do you feel about just changing 66-2?
Yeah, move the one item to the town meeting.
Okay.
We'll deal with everything else in a few.
Okay.
And then 1401, I think it was 140, I'm sure you have a regulation that would just like 1401, but 1401 has certain penalties, the nonviolence and violations. And with an ordinance, I'm certain that you can enforce the ordinance with a penalty. If it's just a regulation, it creates some uncertainty as to whether or not the penalty will be enforceable, so I think backing it up with an ordinance makes a lot of sense.
And that's a fair statement, good point.
Yeah, and I.
Not go forward with that.
Yeah, and this is, this is a modern ordinance that was created some time ago by the state and lots of towns I'm aware of passed, or people that have these sort of ordinance, to allow WPCAs the enforcement powers of expressing this ordinance.
Okay, well then.
I do think, however, the first one should be done because it's an antiquated term.
Okay, so, I move to amend, uh, WPCA ordinance 66-2, ordinance creating a sewer authority as presented at tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting, and move it to a town meeting scheduled for October 17th. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And, um, next, new business, forward tax exemption for tax exempt institutions to a town meeting. Where'd this come from? This, oh, I got it, okay. Okay, so I move to send the ordinance for a tax exemption for certain tax exempt institutions passed by the Board of Selectmen on March 21st, 2019. To a town meeting scheduled for October 17th. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you did pass this already, and what it does is, it's, the Historical Society bought a large pot of land, and it would be, it would be a, a tax on the purchase of the land if we didn't exempt them from it. And so that's what we're doing, is, is exempting them from that tax on the property they bought. Not, well, they're a nonprofit organization. So, um, we're just moving it to a town meeting, yes?
Uh, can I, uh, there is a really technical question to, to.
Sure, okay.
The difference between a public act and a special act, special act is narrowly constructed and only applies to that one particular entity, is the same hold true with ordinances?
The specific order?
State to local, are we doing something for one particular entity, or does this have broader ramifications?
This has broader, but I think, and it, and I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I think in the timeframe, it's limited to a timeframe, and I, I think that would be the only one that falls in that timeframe would be the Historical Society.
Yeah, so this is effectively the local special act you're running from there.
Yeah, this, um.
That passes the smell test?
Yeah, I, I've seen other towns do this, especially for groups like, I've seen, like, the land trust, where they'll, they'll think this exemption is specific to carry out one specific purpose. And a land trust is preservation of open spaces, one is preservation of historical assets. I think it's fine, what, what happens here is, uh, tax exempt organization buys a property on January 1st, and says, well, we're tax exempt, we'll never see a tax bill. But there is a tax bill, because it's the second half of the prior grant this year. Unless you just have properly a closing, tax exempt organizations are responsible as the owner for the, the incoherent tax bill that, as we all know, we pay twice a year. No one focuses on the fact that it's from the prior grant this year. So, this property is tax exempt for the next grant this year, but wasn't the. So this property is tax exempt for the next grant this year, but wasn't the past grant this year, and they get stuck following the tax bill. That's really what this problem is solved. This will apply to these historical society only. And I think that's okay because that's where we're supporting-
That's what the intention is, but are you saying unattended that I'm concerned about? Do you think we're good?
No, because it says all personal, real person property acquired by these, these ones are historical society incorporated, incorporated. So I don't see how you can extend that to anybody else.
And for cataloging purposes, when we pass this, it's going to give a designation of 19 whatever. And that will stay in place and on the record books beyond 2019?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, the next. Approve an agenda for the town meeting on October 17th. And I don't think this is in your package.
It's not.
Okay, so I would, I would make the following items for the town meeting on October 17th. One, to consider and amend the WPCA ordinance 66-2, ordinance creating a sewer authority. Okay, that's, that's number one. Should we vote on these separately?
Yeah, either way, it makes sense to do it separately.
Okay. All those in, discuss, there's a second.
Seven.
Discussion, yes.
Why are we voting on these at all?
Well, you're, what you're doing is you're voting on the call of the special town meeting. And what the prospectus is suggesting is you're, these are the items to be included in the call of the special town meeting.
And we might, let me, let me, because we've just gone through the move to town meeting, I can do the call and I can list them all that we've just approved. Because what I'm going to do after that is some of those, I want to move to a ballot, I want to move it to a paper ballot, basically. So I'm not, so when we have the town meeting, some of these we can vote on at the town meeting, some I'd like to vote on at a paper ballot.
At a later date?
At a later date.
Or by voting machine?
Well, if they're available by a voting machine, yes.
What if they're not available?
Then we could use a paper box, a box.
And what, how would that work?
The way it worked when we voted on the first casino amendment, casino ordinance, we-
So you're, we would have that big silver box with the slit in the top here in the meeting room for how long?
Well, what I'm going to propose is that we adjourn the, some of these items on the town meeting to a paper ballot or a machine ballot, and I want to open it up for all-day voting at the two polling places like we do normally.
Everybody's okay with that?
We can do it.
The retired registrars get real fired up that morning.
Well-
I think you want a day's work, Paul, that's wasting five grand.
We're going to do it, I think. You can vote against it, Jason.
I don't, I'm not confident we can do it.
Okay, that's okay. Then we'll have, we, we, we're going to set an agenda for a town meeting. We can do that.
Yeah.
Let's do it. All right.
So may I ask you, I get sort of lost, you made your motion.
Well, I think, I rescind the motion.
You're going to take, you're going to get that in?
Yeah.
I work that over there.
Okay. I move to, maybe you can help me with that. I, I move to, well, I move to approve the agenda for the October 17th town meeting to be the following items. One, to consider and amend the WPCA ordinance 66-2, ordinance creating a sewer authority. Item number two, to consider and approve the ordinance regarding a tax exemption for certain tax exempt institutions. Item number three, to authorize the first selectman to sign the amended facility sharing agreement, regional animal control facility agreement. Four, to consider and approve the ordinance regarding the creation of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. And five, to consider and approve the ordinance regarding the distribution of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
When is this going to happen?
October 17th.
At 7:30, right here.
That's correct. That'll be, our meeting will start at seven, we'll adjourn the meeting, not adjourn the meeting, recess the meeting to have our town meeting at 7:30. And that, the agenda that I've just listed will be the agenda of that town meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
We've had-
No. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Jason?
No.
Okay.
I don't understand, but you know it.
Now you'll understand. Okay.
I move to adjourn the vote on three agenda items listed on the call of the special town meeting scheduled for October 17th to a paper ballot vote between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at the Town Annex for District One and Town Hall for District Two. And the three items are, item number four, to authorize the first selectman to sign the amended facility sharing agreement, region animal control facility agreement. Item number five, to consider and approve the ordinance regarding the creation of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. Item number six, to consider and approve the ordinance regarding the distribution of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Jason?
No.
Thank you for not taking your ready.
Um, okay.
Can I just, when we had, when you went over the town meeting agenda, you listed five things. When you listed the, whatever the mutant thing you're doing on the 24th, you listed six things.
So, no, I know, on the 24th, we're only doing three.
But we put five on the agenda.
Right.
And then you talked about items four, five, six that you were recessing.
I, I miss, you're right, I misspoke, you're right.
About which part?
Of the numbering, numbering. Let me, let me redo that. I-
Well, maybe we can find a voting machine. Or two.
That's expensive.
Do you know how long it takes to have the memory card sent to New Hampshire to have the program? You're going to get the ballot here?
How?
Okay.
On the personal, personal privilege? Every truck to the county attorney, do you see if that's proper?
It's sitting right there.
Charter was the answer.
You want to think of the charter, right?
I went to charter over about 10 times.
Read the charter.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to make a, how do I undo? I'm going to, I'm going to rescind the motion I just ma, made to, well, I'm going to amend the motion I just made. And because I-
Reconsider, you're going to move to reconsider.
Move to reconsider. The, I, I move to reconsider.
Is that correct?
A second? Are we just a second? How do we do this?
Vote to reconsider.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of reconsidering?
Aye.
Okay. And now do I just make a new motion?
Make a new motion.
Okay. I move to adjourn the vote on these, on the, on three agenda items listed on the call of the special town meeting scheduled for October 17th, 2019 to a paper ballot vote between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. at the Town Annex for District One and the Town Hall for District Two. Item number three from the town meeting agenda to authorize the first selectman to sign the amended facility sharing agreement, regional animal control facility agreement. Item number four, to consider and approve the ordinance regarding the creation of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. Item number five, to consider and approve the ordinance regarding the distribution of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Jason?
Do we know that we for sure have two locked boxes that are suitable, that are available?
We will.
So we do not currently have them?
I do not know.
I know we have one.
Good. Then we need one.
No, we need two.
Or one more.
So you need a milk crate with a slot in the tie?
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Still no.
Okay.
What is the vote? What is the paper ballot?
It's for, it's for, what is it?
When?
Oh.
I don't think you said that.
No, it wasn't said.
You didn't say that in the amendment.
Do we have to say in the amendment what it is?
Do it a third time.
Okay, got to do it a third time.
Well, no, just, just-
Okay.
Just restate the vote.
Okay, I'll restate the motion. I move to adjourn the vote on three agenda items listed below, listed on the call of the special town meeting scheduled for October 17th, 2019 to a paper vote to be held on Thursday, October 24th, 2019 between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. at the Town Annex for District One and Town Hall for District Two. Item number three, to authorize the first selectman to sign the amended sharing agreement with the regional animal control facility agreement. Item number four, to consider and approve the ordinance regarding the creation of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. Item number five, to consider and approve the ordinance regarding the distribution of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Thank you, Tom.
You meant 6:00 a.m. to 6, it's at 8:00 p.m.
To 8:00 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Third time, no.
Okay, got it. Now, approval of tax refunds.
I don't have those.
Okay.
This is the check register.
Yes, I'm going to, you want to, you want the check register?
No.
Okay. Anybody want to approve the, make the motion? I, I move to approve the tax refunds for $2,190.22. Is there a second?
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll do selectman comments and reports. And Charles, you're up.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Steve?
Oh, can I go ahead?
Fine.
I'm sorry. That the, the guide rail on Windsorville Road was just installed and I've gotten two calls from people that said that was really a good thing because it's been in terrible condition for a number of years. They really did a nice job there, Tom. So Leni should get complimented.
Okay. Steve? Okay. Andy?
No meeting of the Economic Development Commission. However, the Calamar project is really coming along. They, you start to see structure going up on the main building and the foundation looks at it all in place. So that's a good thing. There are a lot, a lot of people working there. The Electrician's Facility on Crafton Road is also moving rather along. They have actually closed in the training building with sheet metal wall. And they are starting to do the same on the administrative building. I talked to Ruben and he said he is getting a fair number of inquiries from commercial developers on various projects that they are, are looking at East Windsor for. He's encouraged by that. He said nothing is really firm enough to bring it up at the meeting. There are a couple of them that he believes are close to presenting their concepts to the planning and zoning. So that's good news. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Jason?
East Windsor Beautification Committee had a special meeting to discuss the Keep America Beautiful Grants. The grant opportunity requires a one-time fee of $2,000. So what they will be doing is reaching out to other area towns to determine the value of the application fee in terms of the total return on the grant opportunity. On September 21st, I volunteered for Abbey's Helping Hand at Geyser's Semi-Aid and Sidewalk Sale. Geyser's donated the product and Abbey's Helping Hand sold it. The proceeds all went to the, to Abbey's Helping Hand and raised over $500. I note this because it's great to see a longstanding business in the community supporting a relatively new but successful charity in the community. That same day, I attended the tree planting ceremony at the Scantic Green. East Windsor Girl Scouts led the planting after Arberis John Kito explained a bit about an oak tree and its symbolism. On September 29th, the Save JV Sports Citizen Action Group held a fundraiser to complete their, their goal of raising funds to restore JV Sports. This was a wonderful citizen-driven initiative and they surpassed their expectations. Congratulations to the organizers and to the participants and I hope that they all stay actively involved in the community. Later that night, I participated in a charter revision information session at Main Street Grill hosted by Paul Anderson and I think the East Windsor Cox Facebook page. The session was attended by about 25 people and we went point by point through each of the 12 proposed changes. I remain in my original position that they should all be rejected. Tomorrow, the three candidates for first selectman will hold a debate at the senior, it's sponsored by the Senior Center, but the three of us will debate at 12:30. This coming Saturday, Bartoberfest will be held at the East Windsor Reservoir starting at 11:00 a.m. The event is family-friendly and obviously pet-friendly. Proceeds go towards the upkeep of the dog park. That same night, the Warehouse Point Fire Department will host their annual pig roast starting at 3:00 p.m. at the Bridge Street Station. And on October 15th, Abbey's Helping Hands will host their dinner with Abbey at 5:00 p.m. at Red Robin in Enfield. Proceeds will go to benefit families with children afflicted with developmental disorders. That's all I have. That's all I have.
Okay, I just have two things. One, I also attended the planting of that tree at the Triangle at the Congregational Church, and I assisted, I was in the shoveling with the Girl Scouts, so that was on Facebook. And also, I attended, and I'm, I'm not sure if it was Monday or Tuesday, but at twelve-thirty at the Senior Center, John Larson came, and he's, you know, a federal representative from the state, and he spoke on Social Security. I was only able to stay for a little while because I wasn't aware that he was coming to the Senior Center, and, but I, I did hear it just an hour before he arrived, and, so I went there to greet him, and I said hello to him also, Senator Anwar, the state was there, and Jason was there, but I guess he didn't remember it, or didn't put it in his.
I, I didn't include it in my report because it was a political event, and I didn't think it was appropriate to include that as part of my selectman's report.
Oh, now, are we having, I guess there's going to be another selectman's debate at the Senior Center tomorrow.
Correct.
At twelve o'clock, so we are having some political debates occurring, and that's, that's a good thing. I, I'm going to, I'm going to try, if I can find out when they are, it's.
It's twelve o'clock, or twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty tomorrow, yeah, but I, I hear that there's maybe another one scheduled too.
October eighteenth at six, at the high school.
High school, okay, that sounds good, October eighteenth.
I was at John Larson's as well.
Okay.
It wasn't Larson's, it was mine, I, I hosted the forum.
Okay, it's nice of him to come.
Yep.
Yeah, it was good to see him, too. Okay, that's all I have. We'll go into executive session. I moved, I don't, you moved to go.